As the Mayor of the Town of Clayton, I'd like to call this Clayton Town Council Meeting to Order. I'd like to ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, led by the Clayton Civitan Boy Scout Pack Number 24. Thank you. Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day. And we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the Town of Clayton, for it's in your great name we pray. Amen. Amen. I'd like to express our appreciation to the Clayton Civitan Boy Scout Pack Number 24 for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Come back any time. Up next is, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
One adjustment, Mayor. We'd like to ask the council to pull from the consent agenda under November 4, 2019, draft minutes, adjust the November 4, 2019 closed session minutes for some revisions.
Okay. I have that noted. Up next is the consent agenda.
Move we approve?
A second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is new employee introductions.
Samantha Wollnweber, Planning Director. I would like to introduce our new planner with the planning department. This is Jeff Keynes. He is from Portland, Oregon. He did move here, all the way from Portland to Clayton to take the job, so we're very excited about that. He has close to 20 years' experience in planning. He has his Masters in Planning from the University of Texas at Austin. And he is also AICP certified, and he has those 20 years as in public and private sector planning. So he's been a great addition. He's hit the ground running, and we're very excited to have him.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Town Council. I am Jeff Keynes, and I just want to say I'm very happy to be here, and I look forward to working with everyone here on many projects that the town has to offer. It's just been a pleasure so far since I've been here just over a month. So thank you for everyone's hospitality, and it's just been a wonderful place.
You moved to warmer weather, didn't you?
So Jeff, I have to commend you for two things. I too am from Portland, Oregon. Actually, I was born there, and I'm a diehard University of Texas Longhorn fan. Have been ever since I was eight years old.
Oh, well, I thought I saw something in your eyes when you...
Welcome.
Glad to have you.
All right. And up next is the Techno Tigress Robotic Team.
All right. Good evening. Samantha Wollnweber, Planning Director again, and myself along with Joy, our Library Director. We hosted these young ladies one afternoon here at the Town Hall and then at the library. And they are the Techno Tigresses, the first robotics league in Clayton, in Johnston County. They're here in Clayton, and they're an all-girls league. So they have a little presentation for you, and I'm going to let them take over.
My name is Sloan Mann, and I am the Project Coordinator and the Lead Builder of the Techno Tigresses. I am 11-years-old, homeschooled, and have lived in Clayton my whole life. As the Project Coordinator, I am in charge of the majority of points that we earn at competition. The project is where we are given a real-world prompt we have to research and create an innovative solution for. The theme for this year is City Shaper, and it is supported by Lucas Films and Disney. The challenge we were given was to identify a problem with a public space or building in our community. After talking with the Town Planner and the Librarian, we decided to focus on the children's room at the Clayton Library. We decided that the room was underutilized for kids to fully express their creativity in an educational environment. Our solution is to develop interactive digital tiles that incorporate hologram technology to make book characters come to life and that mount on the wall space which is currently not being used. As the Lead Builder, my job mostly consists of making a steady robot and attachments that are easy to use for the coders. We have two robots, Tigger and Sherecon. The brick is the first part of the robot, and it's kind of like the robot brain because it stores all the code from the computer into the robot to do the mission. Attachments are also very important and play a big role in completing the missions. We build all sorts of attachments to lift, to drag, to rate, to press, or to carry things across the board. I like being Lead Builder because sometimes you have to find an innovative solution to put pieces or parts on the robot. I like being on this team because we get to go to lots of places and talk to lots of people to learn about STEM.
My name is Ava Cummings, and I am the Lead Programmer for the Techno Tigresses. I am 13-years-old, and I've lived in Smithfield for nine years. I am also a 7th grader at Neuse Charter School. As the Lead Programmer, it is my job to code the EV3 Mindstorms Lego robot with the Lego software. We code the robot to perform certain missions that we have displayed on our mission board given by the Lego Challenge designers. An example might be the robot moving forward from the launch area to release a swing on a certain mission, or making building improvements by moving pieces from one area of the board to another. A lot of our missions show us, they display real-world problems across the globe. For example, the swing mission is similar to the Town of Clayton realizing that they didn't have an all-abilities park and then designing and building the harmony park. We collect points through each mission that we complete. I like being Lead Programmer because I like trial and error, experimentation, and discovering innovative ways to solve problems. I like being a part of this team because you get experiences that you can't get anywhere else.
My name is Caitlin Nolte, and I am the Core Value Leader of the Techno Tigresses. I am 12-years-old, and I am a 7th grader at Southside Christian School. Core Values is the most important part of our team because it involves both the robot and project portion of our season. The core values of First Lego League are innovation, inclusion, impact, discovery, teamwork, and fun. We practice these regularly through Core Value exercises which we use to start our meetings. In each exercise, we try to improve communication, creativity, and teamwork. For competition, I designed and created the Core Value Board. This board has pictures from our activities, meetings, field trips, and time with guest speakers. What I like about being the Core Value Leader is that I can help our team be organized and efficient. I love being on this team because it gives me an opportunity to increase my knowledge about robotics. I learn from all the guest speakers we have, and it's a lot of fun.
My name is Sydney Massoff, and I am the Lead Marketer for the Techno Tigresses. I am almost 13-years-old and in a 10 Neuse Charter School in Smithfield. As Lead Marketer, I help put their branding such as creating logos, stickers, and sending emails to well-wishers and sponsors. In First Lego League, we have to create a skit that we present to the judges that are flexing our solution to our real-world problem. I also help create this skit. As Lead Marketer, I have learned to talk to adults with more confidence and the importance of writing thank-you letters. On that note, I would like to thank the 61% of our sponsors that come from the Town of Clayton. I like being Lead Marketer because it allows me to showcase my creative side. I love being part of this team because it's the first and only all-girl team in Johnston County. We're like a big, happy family.
(inaudible). Awesome.
Thank you for your time.
I don't know if y'all heard my comment, but I'll say it again. That's amazing. And your presentation skills are superior. And like, if my public information officer finds out that like, you can have a script to go by, but you can also memorize it so you don't have to read it, then the mayor is going to be in big trouble. I just can't thank you enough for being here. I can't thank you enough for what you do for Clayton. I think it's awesome that you're so intuitive and ingenious in your approach and how you go about doing what you do. I'm also thankful to your sponsors that are from Clayton and for, to those adults who helped lead the way with all of you. I just, I'm thankful for them too, you know? So thank you for being here. And what you do is just awesome. I'm blown away. So awesome. Yeah. Thank you. Let's have a nice round of applause for these ladies again. Yeah, the rest of the meeting's kind of boring, so if you want to head out.
Tiger involved there.
So up next will be a couple of public hearings. The first one is 2019-35 S U P Durham Street Town Homes. This is a quasi judicial hearing, and I'll turn it over to the attorney for a briefing on quasi judicial procedure.
Excuse me. When the council sits hearing a quasi judicial item, it's like it's sitting as a judge. It will base its decision only based on evidence that is presented here this evening by witnesses that have been or sworn or affirmed. It will not consider hearsay evidence, and its findings will be based on competent material and substantial evidence. And at this time, I believe we would ask anyone who wants to speak to this item in support of or opposition to, including staff, to be affirmed by the clerk.
To solemnly affirm that the testimony you are advocating is true to the best of your knowledge and belief. After all, for your testimony, please make sure you sign.
If it's all right, I would like to present both the special use permit and the preliminary plat concurrently in one PowerPoint. And then at the end, we'll make two separate motions. So the applicant is requesting a special use permit and a preliminary plat to develop townhomes on the subject property. The special use permit is to develop the use of townhomes. Since it is Zoned R8, it's not permitted outright. And they are requesting the preliminary plat to develop 21 townhome lots. The property is just over 2 acres in size, and it is located off Durham Street and Holding Street, and it's currently vacant. The property again is Zoned R8, and they are proposing 21 units, which comes out to 8.71 units per acre as their density. Some of the townhomes will be accessed via Durham Street, and the remainder will be accessed off a new public street that is proposed that connects onto Durham Street and Holding Street. They will be providing the required landscaping buffers, the north, along the single-family residential lots to shield them from the townhome development. And they are also proposing to utilize rollouts for trash collection instead of a dumpster location. There will be a mail kiosk on the site to serve the townhome units, and there is sidewalk provided and handicap ramps and crosswalks to make sure that all residents can access For the dimensional standards, they are setting it via the special use permit. They're proposing a minimum lot area of 1,500 square feet, minimum lot width of 20 feet, maximum lot coverage and impervious surface of 80%, and the density again is 8.71 units per acre. The front setback would be 25 feet, side, street setback 10 feet, side interior zero, and 15-foot rear setback. And this is common for townhome developments that we've seen in the past. These are the proposed architectural elevations. All the units will include a garage, and they will primarily consist of vinyl siding with board and batten and stone features throughout. Proposed use and the preliminary plat are both consistent with the Comprehensive Plan 2040, which designates the land as high-density residential and allows up to 10 dwelling units per acre. They are proposing just under that at 8.71 units per acre. It's also consistent with the surrounding land uses. Directly north is single-family, but north of that is a townhome development at the intersection of John Street and Holding Street. And to the south is town property where Clayton Area Ministries is located. The applicant has addressed the findings of fact for both applications, which are outlined in the staff report. And if approved, staff is recommending conditions be placed upon both the special use permit and preliminary plat as outlined in the staff report. And tonight, we will need to make two separate motions, one for the special use permit and one for the preliminary plat. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and the applicant's here as well to speak.
Thank you. If not, we'll hear from the applicant.
Cart Lane True Line Survey, and here to speak on behalf of the applicant for the Durham Street Town Home Project. The package is in front of you. It is 22 units on Durham and Holding Street connecting those two, and we set the conditions of approval as outlined in the staff report. Here to answer any questions you may have, in present also is the owner and also the engineer, the civil engineer.
Any questions or comments? Grantis.
I noticed in your neighborhood meeting, you had one person, a Mr. Tim Masters, and it was indicated what the questions were that he had, but there were no answers in our packet. Could you give us the answers to the questions that were raised by him? The first one being stormwater plan, who approves?
Yes. The stormwater management plan will be approved by Johnston County Environmental, I mean, Johnston County Public Utilities.
And he implied that he wants, didn't imply, he stated that he wanted performance bond to ensure no flooding on his apartments. And you explained each answer to him. He had no further questions. Could you explain the answer that you gave him?
Yes. The, I explained that the plan will be approved by Johnston County Public Utilities and that a performance bond will have to be issued with them, and it does not include flooding on his property. The plan will not allow flooding on his property. It has to, in order for it to be approved, it would have to be approved without flooding on his property. So there would not be, and he said there's nothing to guarantee on his property.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. Anyone wish to speak in opposition? All right. If not, no need for rebuttal, and I will turn it over to the council for their deliberation.
Mr. Mayor, if I may before, just to make sure that we're all clear on procedure, we've, we are addressing both items, the S U P and the second subdivision for the townhomes together in one hearing. So the staff presented both of those informations. We will do two separate motions, but the staff presented, excuse me, information on both of those for the special use permit and the preliminary plat, excuse me. So if the council had any questions related to the preliminary plat, you might want to address those also and then deliberate once.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear. We don't, we don't have that many of these, so.
So to the point, if there are any questions or comments or concerns over the plat, now is a good time to interject that. And if there are none, then we will go right into deliberation. Mr. Grantis.
I'd just like to add that in the findings of fact, the responses that were made in our agenda packet seem to be satisfactory, especially with respect to the staff and the commentary that they have provided. And I just want to read those findings of fact first for the S U P, that the application will not materially endanger the public health and safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plans submitted and approved. Staff commentary was the proposed development is consistent with the existing development in the area. The townhomes are located north of the subject property along John Street as well as to the west along Holding Street. The development has been reviewed and certified by the Technical Review Committee. Second item was that the application meets all required specifications in conformance to the standards and practices of sound land use planning and the Town Code of Ordinances and other applicable regulations. Staff commentary was the use of townhomes is permissible on the subject property, Zoned Residential R8 upon issuance of a special use permit. The Town of Clayton Comprehensive Plan 2040 designate this area as a high-density residential in the future land use map, which includes all housing types and increased density in close proximity to major transportation corridors and commercial areas. The associated preliminary plat application 2019-36-SD also conforms with the regulations and standards of the Unified Development Code. The third finding of fact, the application will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses. Staff commentary, the proposed development is consistent with other land uses in the area which is comprised of single-family, residential, and townhome uses. The associated preliminary plan, plat application 2019-36-SD also conforms with the development standards and regulations of the Unified Development Code as proposed. The fourth finding of fact, the application will not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies of the town or violate the character of existing standards for development of the adjacent properties. And staff commentary is the application conforms with the town's Unified Development Code as well as the future land use map in the Comprehensive Plan 2040. The proposed use and development standards are consistent with the existing development of the surrounding areas. And then with that, I'll make a motion to approve S U P application 2019-35 SSUP. This motion is based on the following findings, that the application will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plans as submitted and approved. Two, the application meets all required specifications and conforms to the standards and practices of the sound land use planning and the Town Code of Ordinances or other applicable regulations. Three, the application will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses. And four, the application will not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies of the town or violate the character of existing standards for development of the adjacent properties. And if approved, the conditions in our agenda packet will be applicable.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval of the 2019-35 S U P. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And motion carries. Now, we'll need a separate motion for the 2019-36 subdivision.
Mr. Mayor, I'm comfortable, based on deliberation, that we've met the findings of fact, and I'll make a motion that we approve 2019-36-SD with conditions based on the findings of fact in the agenda packet.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the 2019-36 special use permit. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion carries. Thank you. Up next on the agenda is the Edwards Electronic Developers Agreement.
Good evening. This is a request from Edwards Electronic. This is a developers agreement, and this has been reviewed by our attorneys. The developers agreement is for a location at 3821 Palatine Road. It is currently the property of Edwards Electronic. They are looking to expand and add a new building on their property of 6,011 square feet. They currently have water and sewer through the Town of Clayton. According to our ordinance 51.03, they have to ask for an annexation and/or developers agreement prior to extension of those services. So this is that agreement. It has been agreed to by all parties. Along with the developers agreement, if it is approved by council tonight, they will also submit a voluntary petition for annexation. And either at the time of CO or as of January 1, 2021, we will automatically begin the annexation process. Now, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we authorize the execution of the agreement.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the execution of the developers agreement. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, under Old Business is the New Neuse River Water Reclamation Facility Business Case Evaluation.
Okay. Good to be here. J.D. Solomon, 216 Stone Brook Drive, Clayton, with Jacobs Engineering. So here tonight to present, I came two weeks ago to give you some background about what we were doing and how we were doing it. So tonight, I'm here to give you the recommendation for the new wastewater treatment plan. We talked about last time, we had three major decisions to make, and this was what we did the business case evaluations for. What and how large of a facility should we build? What do we do with the current plant? And then finally, which funding alternative path do we choose? And we talked about two and three being kind of a subset of one, but they all had their separate considerations, and we wanted to bring those, all three, to you as different recommendations. We also talked about last time, we would bring you three really bases for our recommendations. One would obviously be financial. The second would be the non-financial aspects or the, the non-monetized aspects, a lot of the things, the quality of life and protection of the environment that's often hard to put a financial number on. And then finally, third, we would talk about uncertainties and risk and some of the things that would go along, how that would play into the final decision that we would make. So for your recommendation, with no further ado, is to master plan the site for 10 million gallons a day, to authorize staff and consultants to proceed with permitting, funding, and bidding a 6 million gallon per day plant. But then the caveat, to be satisfied with 4 MGD, that would be a short-term pursuit, and then adding 2 million gallons shortly thereafter. What's clear is you're going to need six within the next 10 to 15 years. If you can afford it and all the other uncertainties fall into place, it would be great to build it, and that's what we're recommending. We could also, you could live with four, be very marginal, but you could do four and two if that's the way the cards fell in place. So the recommendation is six tonight, and some of the uncertainties that go with this are first, funding availability. And you have some of the numbers in your package, but the ability to borrow the money and that, the funding being available in a short timeframe, we'll talk about those options in a second. We'll talk about those options in a second. Rates, obviously. The permitting itself for a new greenfield facility. We've got a lot of hurdles to cross with the state and the feds as far as the environmental considerations. We have a former rifle range on the site, which is sitting on the high ground. So that has to be dealt with, and that could have impacts on other things. We also enjoy contracts with Raleigh and Johnston County. And while you won't need those after you build a six M G D plant per se, you own capacity at Johnston County, and you've got a long term agreement with Raleigh. So that gives you some hedging against delays or issues or problems or another big customer coming to town or a number of other things. We've always had total dissolved solids in our wastewater from some of our industrial facilities. That's an issue we'll have to deal with as as they continue to expand. We have to get two conveyance lines to the site. And we talk about the the plant being so hard to construct on a timeline, but you've also got to make sure the wastewater can get there. So there's two fairly sizable lines that have to supply the plant that have to be built. And then finally, as we all know from oh eight and oh nine, even though Clayton's booming, and we've got great problems here of of having prosperity and a great quality of life, that can change fast, too. So we want to watch that over the coming years and make sure that we're we're right sized. My conclusion here on these uncertainties is we have beat them to death. We know all we're going to know about them, and we've put it into the business cases, and we've turned it around many, many ways. The only way some of these gets resolved is if if you make a decision tonight or in the near future to to let us go further and and pursue the path of of six M G D. So what do we do with the current plant? And I think the bottom line there is probably in blue. Little Creek has served us well over its life, but its configuration and the size limitations really will not meet our future requirements. It's like the first house you bought that just ended up being too small when you had kids. This site and this facility just won't make it. And the conclusions really were to try to not invest any more money than you have to in it in the short term. We did the asset management study for you guys. You'll remember that. There was some discussion about how do we make it live to twenty twenty seven or maybe twenty thirty two? This study really said you could make it live to twenty twenty seven, and it's a great backstop for risk and uncertainty on the primary construction. But really, you don't want to sink any more into it than you have to. So we'll salvage what's reasonable, and we'll convert what's left to a big pump station on that site, and that'll move the wastewater to the main site. What funding alternative paths do we choose? The answer there is revenue bonds and the state revolving fund. You've heard us talk about that in the past, too. The S R F money is about a hundred million. If you can get all of it over a three year period, that's your cap. So with the numbers we're talking about, we believe that the S R F money and your bond money will be sufficient to fund this project. If we go towards some other funding, it's going to introduce some uncertainties in the way of things like environmental permitting and timing of when the money is available and that sort of thing. So for now, we want to go down the revenue bonds and the S R F money. The other issue that I mentioned before earlier is this is related to Johnston County indicating that with their new plant, they're not going to want total dissolved solids in their new plant. They use these in reuse water. It's mainly salt, and so it's the same reason you wouldn't want to put it on the old Pine Hollow golf course as reuse. The county is going to do a lot of reuse, so they're not wanting to put that on the land. So that means we've kind of got to deal with our own problem. There's an engineered solution to this, and we've got budget in the numbers that have been provided in the business cases. But the point here is this first line that you see there in kind of a chartreuse kind of color to come up, that's got to be built fairly rapidly. It needs to be in place by twenty twenty two so that we can deal with the nitrogen at the Noose Pump Station two site. And again, that's part of the plan, so that's that's in the material you've seen. Other recommendations, clearly, you need money to make it go. You need Raleigh wholesale agreement. There's some provisions there that could be extended and solidified. So we're saying to please do that, staff can do that. We need to complete the final rate evaluation. And because there's been a lot of public interest, and there will be, we we recommend that you start your formal public relations program as soon as possible. And I think you guys are aware that me and Ms. Beard have already sat down and done some information on that already. So we're in progress. So with that, that's the end of my formal discussion, and take your discussion and questions.
Bobby. For you.
Okay.
Plan for six, but we could build a four as long as we're still playing for six, correct?
Yes.
How long would it take for us to take and add that two to it?
You would probably be starting not as soon as you finish, but very closely behind it.
Okay. How about the easements for that stretch that you just showed on this slide? Have you acquired those easements or looked into?
No, we have not, and that's one of those choke points that you can get lulled to sleep with the plant and the bidding and all those complexities. But if we can't get the easements and we can't get that project underway, two years is not a long time to get that finished, so.
Thank you. Good job. Good job.
Anyone else? Mr. Grantis.
In the case evaluation for the Noose River Water Reclamation Facility, you indicated that the town has an effective wastewater treatment capacity of four M G D through twenty twenty seven. Between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty seven, the effective capacity will be significantly reduced as wholesale contracts with Raleigh and Johnston County terminate or face additional restrictions.
Yes.
I'm familiar with the situation with respect to the Raleigh connection. The impression that we have an agreement with Johnston County that essentially is at infinitum. And is that not the case?
It is for a million gallons at domestic strength. They're doing some high strength surcharges on that. The total dissolved solids that you're sending to them now, when they build their new plant across the river, they're not going to be able to dilute that enough to put it on the land. So they've basically come back and told you guys that after the end of twenty twenty two, you can no longer send a total dissolved solids at a certain level to them. So they're they're kind of imposing. You've still got the million gallons, but the million gallons primarily comes off the industrial sites after pretreatment to go to them. So to send residential to them now, there'll have to be more money spent and some other things done. So that that will hurt you. It won't it won't kill you, so to speak, but it will reduce your effective capacity, just like Raleigh could.
Can you give us the estimated percentage of growth for residential, commercial, and industrial over this period of time?
I will do it in total housing starts, which was a question that that Rich had asked us to do. It's about on the fifty, on the number we've given you, it's about three hundred units per year, three hundred new accounts per year.
So that's that's residential.
That's residential. And then we did a probabilistic analysis. I think we took it as low as a hundred and fifty and as high up as four hundred and something, depending on how the economy could go.
And what about commercial and industrial?
Commercial industrial is based on what we've gotten from the big users, those namely being Griffles and Novo. The first estimate that that you see in your package is based on point estimates. They said they needed a half a million gallons or a million gallons more by a certain date. So that's what we used. One of the reasons why if you came into a financial crisis on four, I also factored in on a probabilistic approach is that wouldn't come in maybe as fast as they say. And that's not to call them liars, but I just, all these things aren't going to hit at the same time. So I gave them about a thirty five percent chance of coming in right on time and about a two thirds chance of being a year or two late with that. But your number at six is based on them coming in on time as they said they would. Long answer to a short question, but that's that's how we based it. And those were confirmed twice. They've been confirmed a couple of years ago before pretreatment operations, and they were confirmed as we started this study.
And I noticed with respect to all the costs and and that sort of thing, that I believe revenue was not taken into account in the financial analysis. Is that correct?
That is that is correct. Revenue was considered neutral for all of these alternatives because the question was, was the cost of shipping it to Raleigh or Johnston County going to be kept by Clayton, that revenue, or sent out as an operating, operations and maintenance expense? And so what we didn't try to do on the revenue is try to figure out how much exactly went to Little Creek or how much went to here or there. We just said all of that was revenue in these scenarios coming to the town. And then you guys decided to keep it or to send it out to somebody else.
Okay. In the fee escalation information, now I'm looking on, bear with me just a minute. Now, I'm looking at page one oh seven in my agenda, which this is for new W R F assumptions.
In the back?
Yeah.
Okay, I've got that.
We're looking at, you made a comment that Raleigh and Johnston County fees are escalated annually at ten percent in years two through five, and then two percent in six. Why the downturn?
Based on just current practice. We did, we were, they could not tell us beyond that period of time if they would go on forever. And so our assumption here, actually, what happens at Raleigh is they go up thirty three percent next year, and then we assume they would stay at about ten percent thereafter. Johnston County has said they would go up ten percent for five years, or I believe that's what's in the the model. Normal expectations, those would fall down to about two or three percent over the long haul.
Johnston County, a contractual agreement for the ten percent increase, or is it a best guess estimate?
Repeat the question again.
Is the ten percent for Johnston County something that is agreed to in a current contract? Or is that our best guess estimate?
No, the the, your current contract calls for you'll pay for them at the rates that they levy, whether that be Johnston County or or Raleigh. And the county has strongly said they will raise their rates ten percent a year for five years.
Okay.
So that's what we had to go on.
And has any thought been given about the possibility of partnering with other municipalities with respect to accepting their flow in any of any of this process?
Yes, and and what I would say to that is we have considered that as in as more sources of revenue. But that would be on top of you needing somewhere between four and six. If you built six, I think your doors could open a little wider in the short term, just the same as they could if a new industrial tenant came to E C I A or something. But if you stay with four, you're not going to have that ability to really to do that. So so there's just, it really comes down to what you can afford. And I'll also say those outside regional opportunities probably need to come with some money upfront. We need to look at the rate study, but but it's not something you can finance them. You can't be the bank for everybody right now.
Yeah. I didn't see anything with respect to how, if at all, rates would be affected to users going through this process. Is it fair to say that it's a little too premature for us to to see something like that at this stage? Or do we have information that that could be useful to us?
We have updates to some information. There was a lot of scenarios ran previously. We've got more information based on what we know now, and that information's not quite been put in the rate model that's being done, not by us, but by another consultant. And so that's really the next step is to bring those numbers and and put it in the rate model.
And I would assume that part of that is dependent upon what alternative we tell you to move forward with.
Yes, that's why six would be a nice number to have for regulatory and other reasons, but it would also be nice so we could plug it into the model and and see what it really does.
Last question would be, we had a person in the audience when you were here last time that was concerned about the reclaimed water currently going to Pine Hollow. And is, what would be the status once we go online with this this new plant? Would we still be sending any reclaimed water to them at all or no? And if so, how would it work?
I'll answer it two ways based on what I know, and I will be a little speculative the first part. I think what the town has concluded with my experience with your wastewater in the past is that the reuse is something that we've done for Pine Hollow, but not something we've ever really made money at. In fact, it may have cost us more money as far as upkeep and keeping the equipment ready to to give them that that way, that that reuse water. And so I think there's probably a business case in and of itself of how far that went. With this new plant, it's going to be almost impossible to send reuse water to them because it may have that elevated, a little bit more T D S than they would want to put on grass at a golf course. So this would probably eliminate them. Now, there's a possibility that we could side stream something and treat it and ship part of it out, but then you come back to that first business case. Is that really affordable for the town to do to begin with? You suffer in the town of Clayton of not having a lot of users for the reuse. And incidentally, I work with a town like Cary. We've done their business cases for their reuse, and they're struggling, and they're a lot bigger than you are. So it's, it really is a struggle to find the right customers at the right time of year to do this, so.
Well, that leads me to believe, too, that we couldn't do that for any of our athletic fields. It would be require watering of any sort, correct?
That's right. That's right.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right.
Art.
Let's go back to the slide where you showed the triangle of the pipes flowing.
Yes.
Which one of these in place now?
The the one on the kind of the top left, that goes from where the 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 green line on the top left there. That goes from Little Creek over to E C I A. Yeah, Noose River two pump station.
About the one from the industrial segment to Little Creek?
That one does not exist right now. And the one, the one on the top left, just to add, is not probably going to be big enough to do all you need to have done. So there's probably going to have to be a parallel line. We need to study that. But on the top left, coming from Little Creek to the Noose two site, there probably have to be another pipe put in that.
Rather than build two complete new lines, what's the possibility of only running one from the industrial site to Little Creek? And then have a pumping station that will carry all that to the new site? Because this other site is going to require a lot of easements and costs.
Agree. It's it's a good question. We've looked about half of about half of that green line. We've got it driven straight. About half of it's in existing right of way, and half of it's not. So it it would not quite be configured like you see it. It would go down as much of the existing right of way as possible. But to answer the question, we have looked at ways that we can move wastewater from the industrial park to Little Creek either direction, and this is the cheapest way to do it.
So why do we need two?
Two different, the the wastewater load you've got at the industrial park and the part of the town that's flowing, basically Little Creek, it doesn't make sense to run them back and forth the other direction, not from a cost perspective. We look, and we'll look at it again. I I I hear the question, and I'd rather have one than two if you look at upkeep and construction. But we've we've penciled those distances out.
If we can get by with one, that reduces the cost.
It didn't in this case, and I don't know whether that's part of being on how, I'd have to look at those numbers. But but intuitively, you would like to have one versus two. But we we have looked at the way this water's pumping and the grades of those lines and what right of ways available. And it just didn't make sense to do that.
My my concern, we all live in the town of Clayton.
Yes, sir.
We have a lot of senior citizens that own fixed incomes. What is going to be the cost monthly that we're going to have to increase our sewer rates to cover the cost of this? And how are these senior citizens going to pay for it? And what are we going to do to make sure they're able to pay for it? And I addressed the old counsel when I said.
I mean, it's not J D's job to tell us how we're going to pay for it. And it is J D's job to tell us like what we're looking at. It is JD's job to tell us, like, what we're looking at cost wise per household in Clayton, without question. So, I mean, those are just things you're going to have to cross the bridge when you get there. I did have a very brief but interesting conversation with our deputy manager today in inquiring on what was the initial investment in 1964 when we built our first wastewater treatment plant, which is still the current plant that we are using today. And, you know, it's chump change. Like, back in 1926 or 29, when they built the original town hall, it was built for $150,000. So, you know, I think it's pretty obvious that regardless of what we do, we are headed down the pathway of two and three and four times the amount of cost associated with water and sewer. And there's no way to go around that unless you just put a stop to everything. And I can't see that, that that's going to be the case.
Well, we know Little Creek is going, is what, 50 years, 60 years old? We know Little Creek is what, 50, 60 years old?
50, yeah.
And so.
Five.
Sooner or later, we're going to have to do something anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you probably, you probably could have done it a few years ago, but you, you've had the recession hit especially, and, and these contractual agreements have not been bad for the town during those periods. You've had two willing partners that wanted to sell you the wastewater. They don't want to sell it to you anymore. So they're kind of saying, go out and build your own, because we're not going to give you all that you're going to need to, to continue to grow. I would think Mr. Councilman Grant has also mentioned the escalation, and, and it's a little bit, like you said, Mr. Mayor, the numbers kind of prove out, if, if the economy keeps going, it's going to cost more to build this five or 10 years from now than it's going to cost, say, next year. And so there is a sweet spot in there that we want to hit, but I, rates are going to go up. You've got rates below the median in the state now, you know that. But you're, but the, the stress is on you right now, or, or, you know, it would drive you up to be higher in that rate structure if you looked at it statewide. What I do want to do, once we get the rates back, the rate study, is I can tell you guys what I'm used to seeing in other places, and what people tend to stomach less and more. Again, that's me as a neutral person. You guys know your community of voters better than I do, per se, because you're accountable to them. But there will be some decisions you have to make as far as what, how many dollars a month you want to put in those bills. But it, it will have to go up.
I think one of, probably one of the most discouraging things for me is the fact that I don't know that the public realizes how reasonable it has been to purchase water and sewer from the town of Clayton. We have been extremely reasonable for decades. And now all of that is coming back to, to haunt us, because now we're looking at tremendous increases, because we have been too expensive, too inexpensive for too long.
Right.
You know? But I think the one thing that is assured from this council, and definitely from the mayor, is that we're not going to ask from the public or from the citizenry any more than what we need, you know? And whatever it comes out, the, the rate increase comes out to be, then it's not because we're just banking money and keeping it in the coffers, it's because it's what we need to pay off the debt for the investment. All right? Anyone else with any other questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So I think we're looking forward to some action on this with directing the staff to move forward with the business case.
Mr. Mayor, I suggest that we move forward with the recommendation that was offered by Jacobs Engineering.
Is you making that in the form of a motion?
If it's required, yes. And it appears that it is.
Mm-hmm. We have a motion and a second for directing staff to move forward with the business case. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next, under new businesses, the Horn Memorial United Methodist Dedication Easement Agreement.
Good evening, Dave DeYoung with the Economic Development Department. Tonight, we have mutually beneficial agreement in front of you between us and Horn Church. This is for shared use of the parking lot and their dedication of the two remaining houses that are across the street that complete the land necessary to build our parking lot for this facility. The only changes that will be made to the agreement as presented in the packet is, once the approved site plan is signed off on by planning, Exhibit Z will, the, the drawing that's in Exhibit E will become the approved site plan drawing. So between now and execution of the agreement, that's the only change. And I can answer any questions that you might have. Brian Blake from Horn Memorial is also in the audience to answer any questions on behalf of the church.
Okay. Questions or comments? Anything you want to add, Brian?
The only thing I'd like to add is thank the town for looking into availability of, of working in agreements similar to what we did on the other parking lot about four years ago, and specifically thanking David for his time while working through the agreement. The trustees of church have approved the agreement at our trustee meeting last month, so we're in the position to sign off on the agreement if the council so moves to approve the agreement.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Any questions or comments?
Second.
We have a motion to authorize the execution of the dedication and the easement. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next are the advisory board recommendations.
Yes, important recommendations for appointments to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Interviews were conducted, like, we had 15 or 16. Five things before you, three of them are current members and are being recommended, recommended for reappointment, and that is Travis, Howard Crowder, and Kenny Bennett Field. They will serve a three-year term. Also being recommended to be appointed, Ashen and Rara, and she will expire on December 31st, 2020. Kenny Bennett Jones to fill an unexpired.
Awesome. Questions or comments for the clerk?
Get these folks to the Park and Rec Advisory Board.
Thank you, sir.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the appoint, of the appointment of those folks listed to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is the 2019-233 SNA Smithfield Chicken and Barbecue.
Good evening. This is the Smithfield Chicken and Barbecue Alternative Sign Plan Request. The request is to install a jukebox type sign that does exceed the maximum sign requirements of the UDC. The location is at 10414 US Highway 70 Business here in Clayton. The zoning is V3. It is a little less than an acre. As you can see, the original site, as I'm sure you've gone by, is being demolished, and they are currently rebuilding, and they have acquired additional properties. The old slushy place, and then some of the, behind the shopping center where the Mexican restaurant is, and a few other stores. So they have expanded their site from the original site in this rebuild. They proposed, this is the proposed sign, sign, excuse me, and associated site plan. If you can see the site plan on the left, and then the red triangle is where the proposed sign is to, to go. The original sign that was there, it is in the NCDOT's right of way, so they do have to remove that per the requirements of NCDOT. Sign face area is 75 square feet. It's an ID sign. And then the LED reader board, the electronic sign, is 30 square feet proposed. Their proposed sign height is 20 feet, eight inches. The sign face area that is allowed by code is 64 square feet total, and allowed by code is eight feet tall. The Planning Department wanted to give the council their different options. It is the, by code, the council is allowed to approve an alternative sign if they meet the approval criteria, and just to lay out some different options for the council if they choose not to approve as presented. Option one, approve the sign as proposed. If this occurs, staff does recommend a condition of approval be placed upon the application requiring the LED board to be dimmed at night for safety purposes. And there is a code section that requires automatic dimming of certain signs at, past certain hours. Option two is to approve the sign height that's proposed, either with the removal of the LED, the message board, or lowering of the LED so it's not as tall. Approve the sign face designs, including the LED board, but require the overall sign to be a ground monument sign, and the two signs will be connected, and it would meet the code and not exceed the eight foot as permitted. Option four, approve an alternative design as desired by council. And then option five would be to deny the alternative sign plan request and require the sign to be developed according to the code. We have had three alternative sign plans since I've been here, two years. Yes, sir.
It works. Option five was to deny the application and require them to stay in our code for the new sign as in height eight feet and the square footage as well?
Yes, sir.
Option five, very good, thank you.
And the applicant is here as well. And I'll say, the reason they want to do the sign is because it is their new branding for the rebuild of all the chicken, Smithfield Chicken and Barbecues in the area.
Can we go back to the options?
Yes, sir.
Samantha, since you've been here, how many times have we gone with an option one as stated here?
So the Vincent's Restaurant, they did a painted sign on their building, which required an alternative sign plan that was approved. And then Culvers had a mini board on their drive-through that exceeded, and that was approved as well. But each situation is unique, you have to consider everything.
How, everybody knows where I'm at. I'm in option five. A 20-foot sign is ridiculous on the lesson acre property. It'd be one thing if you had a 50-acre development site, but I, I'm in option five.
Mr. Grantis.
So in the staff recommendation, you, your staff has said approve as presented by the applicant, or select one of the options provided by staff. Does staff have a preferred option?
Sure. So we did give you multiple different options, because sometimes it's hard when we're on the spot here to think of the different options, and this is why my team and I laid these out. Staff would feel comfortable with the sign as presented without the LED board or lowering the sign. If they did want the LED board, maybe do the ground and monument sign. But if as presented, at least remove the LED screen and keep the jukebox style sign.
Is that the only LED screen on Highway 70?
No, sir.
Culvers. And would this LED sign be static, or does it change?
The code does have a static requirement of, I believe, six minutes, which I'm not sure how many people do that. That's what the code says. I guess we, and we've never had an issue where we've sat there and timed something for six minutes, but the code does say six minutes.
The last one I recall with the time constraint concept was maybe the church there by McDonald's? Yeah, with that.
That's the last one that we have of the time.
Where's Culvers? Is it on, on the ground level, or is it on?
Culvers is a ground monument sign.
I, I tend to, I tend to go along with Mr. Satterfield, I think. It's a, you know, option five, and I think, to me, as a second, would be option three. You know, at a minimum, it needs to be a monument sign. I'm not for the LED board, though.
I'm not either. So I'm.
We haven't changed our sign requirements in.
Get in the microphone. Pull it to you.
We haven't changed our sign requirements in how long?
Where? I think Mr. DeYoung may have changed them in his, when he came here, when he first came here, seven, eight years ago.
Probably been two, two and a half years ago, would you say, Dave?
Yeah. The last time we updated the sign code was probably about three years ago in total. I think Samantha's been here roughly a year and a half, two years. So, yeah, it was just prior to, probably the summer before Samantha got here, we made modifications to the code. Of course, we added all the LED or electronic board options in under my guard before that. You could only do time and temperature. And since I'm standing here, I, I might as well just state, you know, we've, we've worked really hard to eliminate non-conforming signs along 70 to be more consistent and not look like 4042, which has all the high pylon signs. I think Culvers is a good example of a site that has done it and been able to meet code and has a very visible sign. It meets our sign requirements. It has an LED component to it, and it's under eight feet in height. I believe the last two restaurants that have come through, which would be Culvers on 70 and Hardee's on 42 West, which is a new Hardee's, also meets the sign code with a sign under eight feet in height at their entrance.
Mr. Mayor, I might suggest, since the applicant's here, you might want to hear from them.
All right. If the applicant is here and you want to step forward and put your two cents worth in?
Yes, I'm here for, for Smithfields. You know, we've, we've been on top of that hill for the last 43 years, and before the building went down, we had, had a big old sign on top of the roof, and it was, it was a landmark, and we all, we could recognize it in any photographs or, you know, we're going back with a state-of-the-art building, building a $2 million facility there, not including all the extra land we had to buy. The, the sign we want to put back is a, it's, it's a very nice sign. It's, it's the, we just, we just did one in, in our Wilmington North location in Ogden. It's basically, it's the same specifications, but it's, it's all neon. It's the barrel, you can't really see it like that. I should have brought like a picture of it at night, but it's, the, the green around it is, is all neon. It's, the, it'll have, you know, the, the white background, but there's red neon lettering in it. Anyway, you know, we don't, we don't do anything halfway, if y'all know anything about us. So we, you know, it is, it is a very nice sign. Here's a, here's a picture. But be, you know, be that as it may, you know, I, I think it would be a, a great addition to the, to that stretch of road, a great entry monument for Clayton. You know, we, we have the longest business, business license, running business license in, in, in Clayton. Very proud of that, so, but that's, that's what we want to do, and, you know, obviously respect y'all's decision either way, but, you know, thought we'd at least ask.
This is the 20-foot-tall sign?
Yes, sir. That's, it's, it's actually the exact same thing that we want to do here, and it's in existence at our Ogden location, 7300 Market Street in Wilmington.
The sign that came.
Is that the closest one you have in this region? That is this?
Of, of this exact, what, we, well, we just started doing the LEDs. That one has, that one and the, the Dunn location has the LED, but we had to reuse the pre-existing top sign, so it's not the, the jukebox, it's just the red. top sign, so it's not the, the jukebox, it's just the red area without the, the green, you know, accents.
Gotcha. Mr. Satterfield.
I don't believe signs is going to be your issue. I think what issue you're going to have is your amount of parking you have, lack thereof, but you met code, and it's all well. And I will add, signs and wiring system, I know Mickey very well, and I bet he can do you a really nice eight-foot tall sign.
In my opinion, we need to be careful how sign comes across and changes the volume of business people come get in the business. I think we need to be careful how we curtail the potential business that a sign will bring into a restaurant. You understand what I'm saying?
No.
And what I'm standing saying is, I like a sign. Maybe it's time we changed. We've had the signage come up with not only Culvers, we had it come up with, with sheets. They built the first restaurant, first station on 42.
Right.
I think we need to be careful about being too restrictive.
Are there other 20-foot signs on Highway 70?
I don't know.
It's the last one.
How tall is your prototype from the beginning, back in the day? The one that was just taken down? How tall was that?
The building itself?
No, how tall is the sign?
Oh, the, the current monument sign?
Yeah.
Or the current sign there? It's, what, what do you think, Brandon?
18, 24. I would say it's probably at least 18, so you know, sign and all the systems. This particular is a sign that they have, I thought it was big, but the pole cover can be, can be narrow. We can, we can take it, narrow it down, and drop this sign halfway down if, if that's what you want. They have landscape that they have to go with around the sign, with the large area they do have. When you're coming, when you're coming into it, there is a chance you could not see it in the future with the landscape that they have to put in. But I, we can narrow the pole cover down and drop the sign down if it being so big is an issue. I mean, that's, that's totally up to you.
You see what he's saying?
So you can bring this sign two foot down, really?
Sign takes what?
Okay, well, your, your LED's 98, eight foot. Your pole cover's close to being six foot. So let's just say the pole cover slid to four feet, the sign's dropped down five feet. You've got 15-foot overall height, that black pole cover you see will not, will not be near as noticeable. You'll see more of the LED, the Smithfield Chicken neon, it, it'll hit you and knock the pole cover. The pole cover could make this thing look huge, but a live picture of Ogden store, which she has on her telephone, it, it don't look that big, it's just when you look at it standing beside two six-foot men. It's the pole cover.
Well, when I think 20-foot tall sign, I think two-story. That's, that's what, that's the vision I get in my mind, and that seems big to me, a two-story sign for a one-story building.
If you, your, your larger houses are 10-foot ceilings, so yes, to the top of the second floor ceiling would be the top of this sign.
I do want to add that, back to the options, that an LED board is still, it's, it's in the code, so the council cannot say that they cannot do an LED board, they can still do an LED board if it met the eight-foot tall and all that, so they, they're just applying for an alternative. So just for that clarification, by code, they are allowed to do an LED board, but this one just exceeds the height, I just want to make sure if I was clear on that, that they can still do an LED board, no matter what type of sign they do.
Samantha, did you say that the Carvers, is that?
Culvers, across from Bojangles.
That was a test, you passed. That, is that sign, did it come into compliance, or is it out of, or was there a special permit for that?
Their monument sign is, is within the code. Their menu board and their drive-through did not meet the specifications, they had to get an alternative sign plan for their menu board and their drive-through sign.
Okay. My concern is this, I don't want to start setting precedent. That is a, I mean, it's a beautiful sign, but it's a big sign, and I think we've done a very good job through the years of trying to become much more uniform, especially on 70. And, and for that reason, I, I would stick with option five. That's not a motion, that's a comment. There may be other comments.
As the council deliberates, I just remind you, your code provision has sections about approval criteria for an alternative sign
Yes.
in, in terms of, you know, meeting guidelines, sign design, scale and placement, consistent with approved neighborhood plan studies or areas, improved safety and welfare for the general public, but things. So you have some approval criteria in your code. I think you also have the ability to suggest, suggestion or option, not suggestion, you also have the ability to invite the applicant to come back with a different alternative sign plan. You don't, you don't have to deny, or they may take that right now based on the concerns that they're hearing from you all today. So you have a lot of flexibility, both as the council and as the applicant, as what you would like to request of the council tonight, having heard the comments.
And if, if I may add, they're wanting this sign to be up when the grand opening hits. If we didn't go with the LED, if we had to keep the, the jukebox sign at the ground, that's something that, I know all towns, they're going to change, you guys are going to change your minds eventually, somebody will, and then there'll be more LEDs in Clayton, or there might not never be no more. But as a sign company, we would like, when we start this sign, to know if, if we go to jukebox, no LED, you know, we kind of got to know to put that particular footing in the ground engineering specs-wise, so one day if you come back and say, okay, two years from now, we've changed, we've decided you can have what you asked for, so we can pick this sign back up and put it, put it down.
I, I don't believe they'll ever change to go back up to 20-foot high signs.
Or 15-foot.
Or 15-foot, don't believe it. Could be wrong, been here a while.
He's thinking. Mr. Bunn?
Did it show? It showed. Big sign to be eight foot off the ground. I'm thinking about driving down the road, seeing all that sign.
They, they can't build that sign if they build it to code, because right now it's bigger than code, plus it's taller than code. So they got to go back to the size sign it can be, which is how many square feet?
This current sign that they're proposing, 75 square feet, just for the portion, the Smithfields portion, with the jukebox and everything around it, so it's only approximately 11 square foot bigger than what would be allowed, so if they drop it down to eight feet tall, they could pretty much still do the same thing, they just couldn't have it the, they'd have to lower, you know, scale it down some.
They got it built to our code.
And keep in mind, the council can deliberate more and come back at the next meeting, we can continue it if there's still further discussion, and we need to, you do not have to make a motion tonight.
I, I just don't want to hold them up on this project, because I have missed them already, and having rib sausages withdrawals, so I, I don't want to do anything that's going to like hold up their progress. I do want them to have a nice sign out there, and one that is, you know, effective and supportive of business, but I don't want it to be the biggest, tallest, most awesomest sign that is on Highway 70 that doesn't, you know, comply with everything else, so.
Make a motion, we go with option five.
Can we put this back up real quick?
Satterfield's motion.
We have a motion and a second for option five, which is to deny the alternative sign plan request and require the sign to be developed to the unified development code standards. Are there any other discussion or questions?
I'm scared if we do that, we're holding them up. I think we're holding them up if we do this with option five, because now you got to go back to the drawing board and redraw this.
That'll take 30 minutes, seriously. It's on the computer.
Is that true? You think it'll take you 30 minutes to modify this if?
I can change it, I can change it anything you want, yeah.
Well, the man stated earlier, it never hurts to ask.
Is that what he wants?
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign?
Aye.
Aye.
So motion is, motion fails. So option five is off the table.
Three to two.
It's three to two.
Three knows.
I think it's three to two in favor of option five.
Let's go one by one, Mr. Bunn?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Holder?
No.
Mr.?
Yes.
All right, so it is a three-two, and the motion carries.
All right, now we'll move on to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Sorry.
Apologies, I was talking to the manager.
My fault, I distracted them. I do, do want to say one thing, that is, you know, we, we've had a very busy month, and it cannot be lost that the, the community turned out and voted in favor of the bond referendum. And what that means to the town staff is that we have a lot of work to do, and we are appreciative of the community's support and interest in our Parks and Recreation, and just as a matter of, of order, wanted to sort of let, let our citizens know that the next, next steps are going to be to really see our Parks and Rec Advisory Board, whom we saw several members either reappointed to or appointed to tonight, to really hit, hit the ground running as far as figuring out who can come in and design the facilities that we've been talking about, and, and help us with cost and timing and, and priorities within those designs. And so that's, that's the next step forward for the Parks and Recreation bond that was approved, and we've got a lot to do, and it'll take many years to get through this, but we hope that the community will stay invested and involved as we continue to, to move forward.
Anything else? Thank you. Town attorney?
Your report.
Open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Alan Tew. I'm 75 years old, I've lived here all my life, except when I was in school, and I've practiced law here for 48 years. I'm here because of a concern that we all have, and that is the reputation of the town. And I think the most telling indication of what people think is a reflection, is reflected in the voting. The voting came as no surprise, you had an unknown who got 662 votes, you had a second finisher with 602 votes. It tells me that what I hear is what I think manifests itself in the election, and that is, there is a perception, and I think it is real, that there is a major disconnect between the leadership of this town, the town administration as well. I've been before you all, I think, three times. My discussions focused on a rezoning petition that was approved ultimately unanimously March 16, 2016. I've dealt with every planning department here from the beginning. Since Skip Browder left, there has been a change. When he was here and before, you would go in with something, it was cooperative, civil, and not combative. What can we do? What do you want to do? How can we do it? Or can we do it? I talk with a lot of people that come here from different places, and I always like to take the time to engage them in conversation. And I ask them about Clayton, what do they like about it? Universally, it is that the people are friendly, they actually speak to you. What they dislike, I say, I say dislike, what they miss most is their families and mom and pop restaurants. I've talked with people who deal with the town, most of the dealings with the town aside from the police department, which appears to be functioning well, is the planning department and economic development. And what I hear, and from what I have experienced with the rezoning and the rough handling of the neighbors here, to close this street and to sacrifice for a number of parking lots, what I feel is the safety of the people here. I did some runs down alternate streets on timing, and to get to the southeastern part, let's see, yes, southeastern part, the other side of Lombard Street, and then on the west side of Lombard Street, for example, this house here where the thing ends, you've got potential issues there, there is a delay, maybe not significant, but it's kind of like surgery. If it's me, it's major surgery, and for these people, it's a major problem for fire and emergency. And I think, based on people that I talk with who deal with the town, there has been no appreciable change. And some of it goes from top to bottom. If you'll recall, I made a request, a Freedom of Information Act request relating to how this aberration evolved. It evolved with one person, it never met with any real scrutiny until the neighbors were upset and angry. It was an object lesson in how not to accomplish something. You can expect, I think, in the future to see more changes unless there are significant changes, and you all are the ones to address that. I think about zoning. I was representing someone, and there was an effort by the town to selectively enforce the zoning. I've made inquiries about properties that are within one block of this, about whether or not there is zoning compliance, and you'd have to be blind not to see it, even on a casual basis. Nothing has been done to address that. And I go back to this rezoning and the town parking lot, there was never any traffic study done of any kind minimal until after the fact, the person in charge of it was removed, and I'm not sure that there was any change after that. One of the things that is inherent in rezoning is sewer capacity, especially if it's residential. I've heard more about sewer capacity tonight by J.D.'s presentation than I've heard more about sewer capacity tonight by J.D.'s presentation than before. I repeatedly asked for information about sewer capacity. I got no result, and I asked many of you directly. Nobody has yet to say what that is. In addition, it is kept in such a fashion that it is not a public document subject to a Freedom of Information Act request. I received what I think was poor, poor treatment during the process, and I've stated this before. I was required to attend and did attend a required meeting with the new town, um, public works director and with the then, uh, town engineer. And I was the only one that showed up and was told that. They didn't, one was on vacation, and the other one, uh, they didn't know where he was. I never heard anything else from it. I never got any accurate or any information about it. That is no way to treat people. I'm not angry about it, because I don't think I am singled out for special treatment. But I implore you to, uh, make some changes in the way that you do things. I just don't see that anything has occurred. I think that there could be more public presence of the town manager. There could be, I think, more response. I talked with many, I think everybody who was elected about the rezoning, the problems I had, and then this last matter with the town. Only one gave me the impression or the sense, uh, nobody was uncivil, but nobody gave me the impression or the sense that they were listening. That is a huge problem. I hope that you all collectively will respond to this. And if it is just me delivering the message, I think it ignores the fact that the vote count is the most eloquent statement of how people feel about the current leadership here. Now, I've finished with that, but I do have three questions, four questions. One, does anybody here know the current sewer capacity for the town? If you do, could you please let me know?
Sure. Uh, obviously, as we've talked a lot about wastewater capacity, uh, it's a fluid situation with, um, developments that have been planned with the paper flow and the actual flow that's tributary. Currently, uh, unallocated flow, we have approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons uh, of, uh, available capacity that can be allocated. Uh, with that, obviously, as the development that was previously approved comes online and is then tributary to our system, that number can adjust slightly up or down, uh, on a, uh, ongoing basis. But, uh, as of right now, uh, if we were to continue, uh, or as we continue to, uh, approve developments moving forward, um, the number that we would be reporting back to the state is drawing down off of that three hundred and seventy-five thousand available gallons.
So, let me then ask you why it has taken, um, what is it, uh, three years and eight months for me to get something? And what you fail to appreciate is that the cost to the people seeking to improve the tax base of this community is blown way out of proportion. The budget that was set for that rezoning was, was just destroyed. What does that do to a client? It really turns the client away. What if you're involved with, and this was involving NAI Carolantic, which is one of the largest real estate entities in the state? What do you think that does to someone who participates on their behalf? And there was someone participating. How does that reflect what they may do to recommend to people where they might want to work? I don't think it's good. Second thing, well, the, the cost is over budget. That's a huge issue. The other, I want to find out, are there any existing plans for the recreation bond? Does it deal with acquisitions? Or does it deal with capital improvements, or both? Response?
So, the, the current plan is to improve existing parks and recreation facilities. At this time, we have not indicated any new land banking or new parks, but improving existing infrastructure.
So then, there is no acquisition for this?
There isn't a plan as of right now to acquire new land, if that's what your question is.
No, I'm, I'm sorry if I didn't ask it correctly. If I understand correctly, nothing is used. None of this is for new acquisition, correct?
Acquisition of what, or?
Of property, real property, not?
As of, as of today, we don't have any plans to acquire new property, real property.
Okay. Then, one final thing. And that is, can somebody give me the current status of the Old Town Hall? I have drive by it about six times a day, five days a week. Actually, four days a week. And, um, I don't seem to see any progress. Can somebody give me some update and some information on that?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that too, Mayor Faz. Okay. Um, the, the developer with that project, uh, has obviously run into some delays, uh, and they're currently trying to get, uh, everything back in alignment to, that would allow them to continue that project. And we are in communication with them, waiting for a schedule, um, when they believe they will be able to resume that project. But it is their hope and intent to continue with the project as they originally proposed.
What is the town doing to force the issue?
Well, I, I, other than having a conversation and waiting on a schedule, I mean, that's what we, our expectation is. And if they cannot come, come back to us with a, a schedule that is appropriate, then, then we'll, we'll continue down the path of getting that property, uh, of course, cleaned up and improved.
What is a response date, if you know?
Uh, I think, I'm gonna, I'm looking at Dave for, for remember that, but it, I think to the end of the year, if I'm, but I'm, you can correct me, Dave, if I'm wrong.
I, I think we're hoping at this point that it will be by the end of the year. However, um, there were two partners in that business that took over Old Town Hall. Um, we don't have any ownership interest in Old Town Hall at this point. But until that litigation settles between those two, um, partners, uh, we can't really force it. Well, we can force anything, but there's not any real existing zoning violation on the site right now to enforce anything that I, that I'm aware of. I'd have to defer to planning for that.
So is it my understanding or misunderstanding that there is litigation between the two who own the interest in the LLC? And that's a holdup?
That, that is our understanding.
What ability does the town have to force the issue? Litigation with that is likely to have a life of its own. What can you all do?
I think what we're doing is, is exactly what, like, we just stated. We don't own the building, but we certainly have a strong interest in it. We have a developers' agreement with them. They're, they're not meeting that. So our, our next step would be if, if we feel like they can't or they don't want to proceed with the developers' agreement, then we can renegotiate with them or discuss what the future of that property is. But, um, but again, it is privately owned at this point, so we, we have a limited ability to force them to do anything other than we have a mutual interest in that, that project.
Is there any scheduled follow-up or timeline?
Our communication would be that we're expecting a, a follow-up with them by the end of this calendar year.
How many years has this agreement been in existence?
A year, I'm, I'm something along those lines.
Well, if, if the agreement was, I think, essentially a dollar for the property with a requirement to make an investment, a capital investment in that property of a million dollars, is that accurate or inaccurate?
I'd have to, I'd have to go back and, and can provide you with the developers' agreement if you'd like to look at it.
Could I request somebody to provide me with that information?
Certainly.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. And I thank you, Bob. Thank you for taking the time to, uh, serve all of you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Good night.
Anyone else? I do want to bring a couple of clarifications to your comments, Mr. Tu. And I want to begin with your, um, concern about a property that is within one block radius of where we are meeting here tonight, and your interpretation that there are violations that are taking place on that property. And I would suggest to you, because it's not the first or second time I've heard your concern about that property, but your investigative skills and your knowledge of the law should allow yourself to, to look and see what you feel is in violation over there. Because when I go over there and look, I don't see anything that is in violation. I don't see anything that is harboring pests, like mice. I don't see anything that is holding water, creating, um, mosquitoes. Um, I do see vehicles that are excessive in number, that are parked on that lot, but all of them are in current registration with the state of North Carolina Department of Motor Vehicles. They all seem to be functioning and working. None of them are just sitting there. Um, there have been times during the high growth, uh, grass season that I have seen grass grow around some of the vehicles there, but I've also seen that grass mowed and been taken care of. So, I'm aware of that situation, but I'm not seeing anything that is out of ordinance over there. And i- i- if you do, it needs to get documented and presented to us, because I don't see it.
It's a residential zoning. If you will check, there are vehicles out there. There are two trucks. I saw them today. And they have the name of a business on those trucks. If you will check and Google for that business, you'll find the business address there. So then, does that not, and, and I'm asking you all?
So are you saying they can't park a business truck on that property because it's zone residential? Is that what you're implying?
I'm saying if there's a business there.
I'm saying, are you saying that because there is a business vehicle parked, that it can't be parked there because it's a residential property?
Well, you're looking at the other things. I think there were some, uh, HVAC stuff out there. You're looking at outside storage. And I, i- if the zoning does not, if the zoning permits all of the vehicles out there, then it seems to me that one of the things that should occur is that somebody needs to look at the zoning to refine what can or cannot be done to exclude that. I mean, it appears to the casual observer that there's a business there and that you've got business vehicles and you've got outside storage of things out there. So, yeah, I, I know I can look at the code, but it just seems obvious, and, um, maybe it's not.
It is not.
Okay, then my suggestion would be that someone needs to take a look at the zoning so that whatever you see there is not permitted. I mean, that's a disgrace.
But I hope it never gets to the point in Clayton that Big Brother is so big that they can tell me what I can park and what I cannot park on my corner of Smith and Horn Street. You know, like, I'm, I like, I'm not gonna, um, be a leader of government that is just constantly enforcing people's private property. You know, where it comes to the safety and health of welfare of people, for sure. But just because it doesn't look pretty, you know, I'm already over that. I mean, if you ride around Clayton, there are a lot of areas in people's yards that don't look pretty. But you know what? Everybody doesn't care to be neat and clean and tidy. And I can't create a law that says you must be neat and clean and tidy.
Something should be done to address that. We differ, obviously. You don't do that, but you don't live beside someone.
Move on to what's next. Um, that would be your concern you expressed this evening about the lack of a traffic study out here on Horn Street until after the fact. And this council did throw away eight thousand dollars in a traffic study to satisfy the needs of this neigh, of the neighbors, some of whom you are representing.
I do not represent, I do not represent anyone.
Some of whom have been in contact with you to share their concerns. Um, eight thousand dollars thrown away for that when we were told by twenty-five-year professionals that that is not even close to a best practice. But this council wanted to make sure that the neighbors were satisfied, so they invested that kind of money. So regardless of whether it was on the front end or the back end, the point of the story is, we're being a good neighbor, regardless of how it may appear or what the interpretation may end up being. And I just think it's important that that is clarified.
The perception is self-affirming. I think the vote is more indicative of what it is.
I think the vote says that we want somebody who is new and fresh on a town council that knows as much as the average person knows. I think the, the other thing that it shows is that, um, I'm not, you know, unless you say negative, then you can assume, I can assume positive. So I'm hearing very good feedback on what's happening in local government. I'm hearing very good feedback about having a real, everyday person up here on this council that is not seasoned, that it, that knows the average knowledge of an average person in Clayton. So you can interpret the election results, much like the law, any way that suits your favor. But there's always another form of interpretation out there. So we also differ on that too. Because what you're saying is that the people really showed their dissatisfaction with this election, and I don't find that to be the case at all.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else wish to speak? If not, I'll turn it over to council for comments. Mr. Grantz?
Uh, I've got a couple of questions as staff. Uh, interestingly enough, Mr. Tu asked one, uh, regarding available sewer capacity. It's been a while since we've had an update until tonight. You mentioned three hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons. Uh, it would be interesting for me to know what percentage of availability that is, uh, given the whole. And if you can do that now, that's fine. If not, at a later date.
I, I think J.D. mentioned earlier in our, um, presentations that the town currently owns approximately four MGD worth of treatment capacity. So, uh, that would put us right now, um, about eight percent, nine, eight, between eight and ten percent available, uh, to be allocated. Uh, those numbers, again, uh, we are reconciling them on a regular basis, uh, and it somewhat is, uh, dependent upon the actual flow that we're seeing at the, uh, the various treatment, uh, uh, Little Creek, the, the city of Raleigh, and Johnson County flows added up, so there is some fluctuation in there. But, uh, currently, uh, that is the number that we are working with.
So here's my dilemma about that. The last time, and anybody on this board, correct me if I'm wrong, you, you as well. I believe the last report that we got, which was several months ago, was thirty percent. Is, is that, is that correct? Do we? Do we recall that? We're down to between eight and 10. So I don't understand how we can have such dramatic variances, because we came back probably close to 10 months ago or so and we're told we are at 10%. Then we're told, after much scrutiny, 30%, and now we're back to 10. So because of this, I want this council to have regular updates. We're sitting here approving developments and we don't know what we got for capacity. And that is just no pass for this council person. I want to have that information or I'm not going to vote in favor of any developments until we get it, because we also need to become very selective in what we're going to do with this eight or 10%. And I think you would agree with that.
Yeah, I wholly agree, and I do want to make one clarification in that fluctuation. That is based on the assumed operational capacity at Little Creek being 2.1 million gallons per day. That is the kind of functional capacity that we've determined that facility can really treat. It is permitted to 2.5 million gallons per day, so there is a $400,000 differential there that, the most recent number that I'm giving you is really based on what we can really treat, not necessarily what we could book to our permit. So those numbers are slightly different, well, not slightly different, they're a $400,000 difference, just based on operational capacity versus paper capacity.
Well, I think the key element here is we need accurate data. And I don't care how you categorize it, but let's, once you decide that's how you're going to categorize it, it's got to remain the same throughout. We can't be changing. And now I'm very concerned because we're sitting here eight to 10% again. That is a no pass in my book right now. That frustrates me. So I want to have regular updates. We need this to be able to make effective decisions with respect to what's coming at us. And without it, I can promise you, I'm not going to vote for anything, because I don't know where we are. And I'm not picking on you particularly.
No, I completely understand. And like I said, we are reconciling those numbers on a regular basis at this point. I do believe later in December, we are looking to also bring an allocation policy forward for the consideration of the council to help in decide, you know, this remaining capacity as we develop the new plant and the design and construction of the new plant proceeds, how to utilize that, what we do have available. Additionally, we are still talking to our project partners in City Raleigh and the county as well as to see what other kind of agreements we can continue with them.
Great, I appreciate that.
Thanks.
The other thing I'm curious about is we've not had any reports about the AMI metering systems. I don't have a clue where we are. I don't know what's been issued, what's been installed. I don't know what's working, I don't know what's not working. So I'd like to have a thorough report with respect to hardware, software, what's an estimated go-live date, what problems are we encountering today and how are we intending on resolving them?
Let me add to that. Also, can we revisit the money of that again that we talked about?
Good with that.
About, you know, the meter fees, basically what I'm talking about, because it's a never-ending, ongoing fee.
I have no issue with that.
And you've benchmarked it, I believe, with some other communities, that they don't do that. They have a cutoff date, am I correct?
Yeah.
I'd revisit that when we get our report.
Can you clarify, Mr. Bunn, what your last statement was? They have a, what was that?
About the meter fees. It's a $2 fee every month forever. Communities have a cutoff date. I know we've already pushed beyond that, but I'd like to revisit it one more time.
When you say a cutoff date, you mean an end date?
It ends after so many, like two years, the meter's been installed, it's done.
Okay, we will certainly bring an update at our next council meeting to you on the EMI project and how we're funding that.
Anyone else? Not all entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.